I'd like to welcome everybody to the Burke County Board of Commissioners Special Called Meeting for Thursday, June 16th, 2022 at 3:00 PM. I'd like to say thanks to everybody for coming again. So it looks like we've got a quorum today, Madam Clerk. So we have Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Britton, Commissioner Carswell, and myself in attendance, along with our county attorney, our county manager, and Assistant Finance Officer as well. Please, I would remind everyone to silence their mobile devices. And I would ask anyone that comes to the lectern to speak, please make sure the red light is activated. So those folks at home on YouTube that are watching or will watch the recording, you can be heard. So, thank you. Moving on to item number two, approval of the agenda. The gentlemen, we've had time to review the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Carswell. All those in favor signify with a lifted hand. Motion carries four, zero, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item number three, presentations, this Pet of the Month. This will be presented by our Madam Clerk, Kay Drone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm filling in for Caitlin. She's a little under weather today. This is a placeholder item for the regular meeting. We will, hopefully, unless they get adopted this weekend, which, fingers crossed, we will have Halo, a two-year-old shepherd mix who is completely adorable, loves tummy rubs and long walks, and is just completely precious. And we will have Murphy, a one-year-old male lap kitty, featured as the Pet of the Month. But we are hoping that, you know, they and many others get adopted at the shelter this weekend. If I could also call your attention to our Dogs Day Out program. This is where you can come by the shelter and check out a pup and take him for a walk or take him home and play with him a little while and then bring him back. This helps us get to know his personality outside the shelter. It gives them enrichment and it reduces their stress level from being in the shelter. So come by and check out a pup. I would like to call your attention, we are having a special on dogs and cats. And thankfully, we have just reduced the prices a little bit further. It's now $10 for all dogs and cats that have been in our shelter for more than two weeks. We currently have 28 dogs and 55 cats. And, you know, more keep coming through the door. So we need to have a shelter clearance sale, so $10. That's a great deal. It includes all their shots and their, all that preventive maintenance that, you know, can be very expensive if you mine elsewhere. And if you don't mind, I would like just to read a short Facebook post from our Friends of Animal Services that was posted this week. And it goes like this, "We schedule regular adoption events and fun things on and off-site and do our very best to get all our animals into great homes. We spend countless hours updating Facebook and Instagram posts, getting our animals professionally photographed, provide enrichment, adoption events, meet and greets, and et cetera. But the sad truth is that we are a staff of four and our shelter is completely at max capacity. We are at a standstill and cannot continue to help animals in Burke County until we get some of these animals out of the shelter. Our staff will be faced with making some hard decisions if we can't get things going in the right direction as soon as possible." And as I mentioned, we have 28 dogs and 55 cats. This is how you can help. You can adopt. That's the most ideal situation. If you can't adopt, please consider fostering. This is a short-term situation where you take a pet into your home and everything's provided, and that is greatly beneficial to the pet, the shelter, and you get, it's a great thing for you and your family as well. If you can't foster, we ask you to consider volunteering. And if you can't volunteer, we'll ask you to sponsor a pet fee. That way, somebody who might want to adopt a pet but may not have the funds to do so, that will not be a barrier to keep them from adopting. And finally, we would ask that you share all our Facebook and Instagram posts to help spread the word of all these great things that the staff are doing to try to get everybody into a loving home. I'd try to answer any questions if you have any.
Gentlemen, any comments? Okay, great presentation. Let's hope Halo and Murphy are not going to be around for our regular meeting. We'll have some fresh faces, so.
If not, we'll find two more.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, we'll move on to item number two in our presentation. This presentation will be by our General Services Director, Mark Delahunt, speaking about the designs for Jonas Ridge and East Burke Convenience. Mark, how are you today, sir?
One of the, okay, thank you. Sorry. Benji Thomas, one of the engineering, the East Burke site will be with us. And we've been working with McGill. We'll have some slides to share at that time that show some of the layout, and we hope to also have some potential costs involved. I didn't know this was item number two today. I apologize, but I'll be having everything lined up for the next meeting, share some really good information with y'all. We're really excited about that.
So that'll be available for Tuesday evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. We'll move on to presentation number three, recognition of Health Department for receiving the Ronald H. Levine Legacy Award. Gentlemen, would you all like to come forward? Danny? You're here. I see I'm under here that I was supposed to present, but you made it all the way over here, so.
Well, I just, I'd say thank you, Commissioners, for, it's been a blessing coming here. I've been here almost a year now, and it was quite a surprise that the award is given to people who work in public health in North Carolina for service to North Carolina public health. And it was a surprise. I was one of the co- recipients of it this year. It's quite an honor. I think we've done some good things at the Health Department so far in the time that I've been there, and I'm proud to serve Burke County, and I'm looking forward to continuing to do that.
Well, an impressive achievement, I will say. Gentlemen, any questions or comments for Danny?
Mr. Chairman, this is an impressive achievement. There's not many people that's been in a position like Danny has for a short period of time that has ever won the Levine Award. So when it came out, there was people was overly impressed with everything that Danny has done since he's arrived here in Burke County. So I don't know what else to say except for the fact that he has worked extremely hard and been recognized for his efforts in a short period of time. So we do congratulate him for that.
I agree wholeheartedly with that. It's been leaps and bounds, and that is, it's extremely impressive. And also, it's all on one of your employees today on the front page of the paper. So y'all are doing things that I've not seen done, so congratulations. And gentlemen, do you have any other questions or comments for Danny?
Mr. Chairman, I would just add to that. I agree with Johnny in a short manner, but anytime one of ours is honored, so is Burke County honored, and especially this board, and the citizens are honored. So we say thank you and appreciate your hard and dedicated work.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate all your support, the Board of Health's support. We feel pretty blessed. We're at a time of change. Some things have happened there, but the front page of the paper, I think, today describes exactly the kind of change that we're moving towards, and we expect more of that, not just one or two things, and go on. So we expect to be award-winning. We expect to be one of the best health departments in North Carolina.
Well, you're either, you're already there or well on your way, I would say. So the spotlight is shining brightly for all the right purposes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, without objection, this item will remain on the agenda. We'll move on to item number four, scheduled public carings. This will be presented by County Manager, Adoption F-1 2022-2023, budget and public carrying set for 6:00 PM this coming Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As in years past, we will have the completed budget with all the changes that were asked for at our last budget workshop, as well as the budget ordinance, ready for your review, a public comment, and then the opportunity to vote to approve that budget. So it'll be ready, and Ms. Kay will be getting out that to you with the agenda packet.
She'll be back Monday.
Margaret will be back Monday?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Margaret's had an uncle pass away up in Pittsburgh, so she's not with us today. I'm sorry.
I understand. Our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family during this difficult time, so let's keep her in mind. Gentlemen, any comments on this one?
All right, there being none, without objection, this item will remain on the agenda.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we'll move on to item number five, consent agenda. Item number one, Clerk appointment to CPC FPT, presented by Mrs. Kay Drone. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I want to remind everyone what CPC FPT is?
That is the Child Protection, Child Fatality Prevention Team. And this is a request to appoint Brandy Talbert to the Child Protection, Child Fatality Prevention Team, seat number four at large, to complete the remainder of a term ending April 30th, 2024, and to approve a residency exception to Section 2-88 of the Code of Ordinances.
Gentlemen, any comments? All right. Well, then we'll move on to item number two, Madam Clerk, resolution updating Platte Review Officer for Rutherford College.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rutherford College has requested that they update their Platte Review Officer to Todd Justice, a planter with the cog. And the resolution in your packet removes Kenneth Gaethers, who is their town manager, and it replaces it with Todd Justice, planter with the cog.
Gentlemen, questions, comments on this item? If not, without objection, this item will remain on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move on to item number three, finance, FY 2022-2023, general liability, workers' comp, insurance renewal. And this will be presented by our Deputy Finance Director, Mr. Scott Cook. Scott, how are you today, sir?
Hey, how you doing, Commissioner? Pretty good. This is simply our yearly renewal for property, general liability, and workers' compensation insurance that we get through NCACC each year, and we get through the rates this time of year. The amounts are $506,4,263 property and $237,686 for workers' comp. And again, it's through the NCACC risk pools that we've used for a number of years here, and it's adding the two together, it's a 5% increase over last year, which we think's pretty good within the fleshing. So.
Absolutely. Gentlemen, questions, comments for Scott?
If I can read my own writing, I had a question. I think it's about the, it's page 18, Law Enforcement Liability Budget. Let me see if I can get to that. Oh, yeah, the question, I see my question now. Is that paid for out of our general fund or out of the insurance department?
Do we pay the insurance out of general fund? We pay it out non-departmental, which is in the general fund, but the part that we can attribute to the two enterprise funds of water and sewer and landfill, we allocate to them.
Well, Margaret's not here, so I get to ask you. I knew that we would probably do the check and it'd be in a sense the same way, but it appears that budget item and a number of other ones, that one was just so much, so high, I just wondered why it's not charged back to the department that.
I believe I'm telling you correctly on that. I know in the general fund, we don't charge it per department. We get the workers' comp claim, and we can break those out by enterprise fund and, you know, the general fund departments or whatever as well, you know what I'm saying?
And I'm assuming, Ron, you might answer this question. I'm assuming because we've got it all together, it's probably at lower cost, are we saving money by doing that? Or does it make any difference?
That is the way it's explained to us, that if, you know, just hear about bundling it or whatever, and then they give you some sort of credit for the number of years that you stay into it. So we're supposed to get some sort of credit that way as well.
Well, the point for the questions is real simple. It gets attributed back to the Burke County General Budget.
I'm sorry, sir.
It is, it is paid for by the general fund and not the department that is receiving the insurance. And I just, the question I was going to ask Margaret, can that be done? Or is it just a whole lot simpler, just to, and does it save us enough money just to keep it as it is?
Yeah, like I say, we're paying it out of that non-departmental, which is within the general fund, we'll get that field, but those, the workers' comp claims and things, you know what I'm saying, we can break those out better, but, you know, but.
Can I interject? This is workers' comp for all county employees, so it's irrelevant about the department. Now, when the sheriff asks for some special lawyer services, that they can call up at 2:00 AM and can I kick the door in? I think that's having to be paid out of special monies that he has from drug buys and, or whatever else, where they foreclosed on things. So that would be a different type of insurance or service that we would make the sheriff use non-taxpayer dollars to pay for if he wanted it.
Yes, I didn't realize that was what you referred to. Yeah, that is, is not a part of it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, one more.
Yes, sir.
The purpose for those questions is, and we've discussed this a time or two in the past, is to try to get true accountability of where the money's being spent is tagged to the department that it benefits.
It can be hard, because there's a lot of complexity.
And that's the reason for, just so you understand the question. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other questions, comments, gentlemen? If not, Scott, thank you, sir. We'll move on. Without objection, this item will remain on the consent agenda. That being said, we'll move on to item number four, General Services, Labella Associates' Annual Services, FY 2022-2023. And again, this will be presented by our good friend, Mark Delahunt, our General Services Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yes, this is the contract for engineering services and keeping us in compliance out of landfill. One major difference between this and last year's was about $30,000. It's task number six, get landfill gas remediation at the East Burke and Kirksey Drive landfills. That has been put off a couple of years. We've gotten extensions for this because we're trying to get the new East Burke site up and going, so the work can be done out there. And we want to do both Kirksey Drive and East Burke at the same time, maybe save some costs. So that's the only difference really between this one and what we had going on with them last year, is that one, task number six, and that's why it's been put off some. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or try to.
Gentlemen, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have one, but something you said made me think of one. Since we put it off, did we have it budgeted for last year?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
It may have been the task, but the total amount of the contract at the end of the year was, ended up being 158. It may have been in the budget, though. I'm not sure exactly.
Okay, well, it's mandatory by law. We don't have much choice.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, gentlemen? All right, without objection, this item will remain on the consent agenda. Move on to item number five, renewal of janitorial service contract, again presented by Mark.
Yes, this is the contract, as you know, for external services for all of our county buildings. I think there's actually a list of the buildings in the contract. One change between this and last year's is increase for Consumer Price Index, and we included some regular cleaning at the courthouse. It was being done on a time basis before. We asked them to continue that and make it part of the permanent contract. So the difference between this and last year's contract is $46,000. And again, that between, that includes the Consumer Price Index and the additional cleaning at the courthouse to be done on a regular basis. Be happy to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, Mark's presentation, any questions or comments on this specific item?
Is there opportunity to cap the increased pricing for the second and the third year?
This is an annual contract, I believe, so I believe that's fixed in there.
Says the renewal contract is for three years with the option to increase the pricing in the second and the third year. So I'm concerned as to what the second and the third year might hold.
I think that either party, if I understand the contract correctly, could cancel it if that increase is not satisfactory to us.
The increase would be due to, in your opinion, what, if there would be an increase?
Consumer price index, like inflation or whatever. He'd have to justify it, I would think.
Okay. So for clarity's sake, we can opt out second?
Yes.
Year, so it's year to year, basically, is what we're looking for.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments, gentlemen?
If it's year to year, are we going to sign one-year contract or a three-year contract?
I believe there's an out clause in there. Is that be correct? I'd have to look at that closer, but I believe there is an opportunity to opt out each year.
Says the contract shall begin July 1, 2022, and shall extend through June 30th, 2023. County may further extend the contract terms for a second year upon the same terms and conditions set forth therein upon 30 days written notice. You see that, JR?
Yeah, that, so that would limit it. That would limit it to a year. The county can get out of it.
We're looking at having the flexibility if we want to bid this out, keep everybody on their toes, their pencils sharp, and try to get the best service we can.
That's clear. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, gentlemen? All right, Mark, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Without objection, this item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number six, JCPC, removals, reappointments, and appointments to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. This will be presented by Kay Drone again. You're getting your exercise. You're getting your steps in today.
Yes, that's good. Ms. AJ couldn't be here today. This is a request to make some reappointments, some appointments, and some removals to the JCPC. We're asking to remove Willow Conrad, Taylor Hyatt, and Doug Knight. That was seats 12, 18, and 19, respectively. We're asking to reappoint the following members for two-year terms ending June 30th, 2024. Seat number one, Sarah LaCroy, representing the school system. Seat six, Katie Barnado for mental health. Joseph Martinez for seat nine, substance abuse professional. Seat 14, Brooke Mills, juvenile defense attorney. And we do have Brooke's application now. We're asking to appoint the following members to a two-year term ending June 30th, 2024. Ally Nashburn, representing the District Attorney's Office. Brandy Talbert for seat 15, representing the Chief District Court Judge's office. Jeffrey Beck, an at-large seat for seat 21, and Chris Norman, seat 24, which is also an at-large position, and we also have Chris's application on file now. We're also asking, lastly, to approve any exceptions to the residency provision of the Code of Ordinances if there are any of these folks that need it.
Gentlemen, you've heard Madam Clerk. Any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Then, gentlemen, without objection, this item will remain on the consent agenda. We'll move on to item number seven, ROD, Matching Funds for ROD Grant Program. This will be presented by Trista Amis. Trista, how are you today?
Good evening, Commissioners. How are you? We are here to request approval of a $2,000 local match for the Registered Deeds Grant Program. We have submitted our application April 27th, 2022, for $2,000, and this grant requires a 100% local match for a total of $4,000 that we would use for preservation of historic records in our office. If approved, we intend to use this grant money for restoration, preservation of approximately two volumes of our historic marriage licenses dated from 1866 to 1873 and 1874 to 1877. Currently, these vital records are housed in a banker's box and need significant restoration to prevent further deterioration of these records and to ensure that we are able to provide a durable and sustainable permanent record of these important vital records. Any questions?
Gentlemen, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, just for the benefit of the audience and the people here, when you do this changeover and get it on this new process, how long, how many years do we expect that record to last?
The records to last? We're hoping for like at least 100 years. I mean, the records, when they're restored, last for a long time. Now, they've, you know, are kind of deteriorating, so maybe longer than that.
Yes, nice presentation, the pictures and all.
Thank you. I hope I did good. I'm filling in for Tyra and Stephanie today, so.
But obviously, we need to protect some records. But I do notice my second question would be that you're asking for $2,000 and the project total is 4,440?
The rest would come out of our automation funds.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chairman, when the record is restored, in what format is it still in some type of paper format?
They're generally sealed in the plastic and put in a, like a binder type book, is what our other ones are. I assume that those will be the same way.
It's kind of like a lamination type process?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, gentlemen? Trista, I will say, it's probably been six years ago since I went down in your basement. And, you know, for those that are listening and have never been in there and taken the tour, there's literally, I'll say, hundreds, if not thousands, of volumes that need to be, go through this process. And if money was not an object, there's several hundred thousand dollars worth of work just to do on, just to give people kind of a grasp, because until you've seen it, it is unbelievable. And you're talking about we're losing documents that cannot be replaced. So I'm glad to see this is on the radar, and it has been with y'all for some time. And I just wish there were ways that, there were bigger monies out there that we could anchor to solve that problem. And maybe there is. We've got a new grant writer, so at some point, maybe we can find a solution to get larger amounts for that, because it's, I think people are just very unaware of how big that problem is. So, great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, without objection, this item will remain on the consent agenda. That brings us to item number eight, Tax Department, Tax Collection Report for May 2022, presented by Mr. John Bridgers, our tax administrator. How are you, sir?
Doing well, thanks, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is, report is from July 1, 2021, to May 31, 2022. For property taxes, we have collected 101.22%. For motor vehicle tax, we have collected 99.41%. And for current year taxes, 101.03%. For the liquid taxes, 105.85%. And late listing penalties, we have collected 119.11%. And for the tax levy, for that same period, we have collected 98.38%.
Gentlemen, questions or comments on this item for John?
Looks like we're going to meet our goal for the year. We've got this month to add into it yet, so we, we, we're already over on three or four of the categories, so looks like the tax receipts is going to be a real win.
We'll be very close if, if, I doubt we get to 100% on motor vehicles, so we will be very close.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Without objection, this item will remain on the consent agenda, so we'll move on to release refund report for May 2022. John?
For May of 2022, the, uh, net release for, um, excuse me, is $1,935.57. And for the vehicle tax system was $282.90.
Thank you, sir. Any, any comments, gentlemen? If not, uh, this item will remain on the consent agenda. Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir.
All right, this brings us to item number six, Items for Decision. Under Items for Decision, uh, item number one, Community Development Abatement and Demolition Order 7901 Houston Avenue. This will be presented by our deputy county managers slash planning director, Mr. Alan Glides. Alan, how are you, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see your team working in the back as well.
Yeah, they'll be actually presenting. I was just gonna say a few words, um, before Officer Marler presents the two abatement and demolition cases that you are being, uh, asked to consider. These types of processes which entail unsafe building or minimum building standards are worked in cooperation with code enforcement between Officer Marler and Building Inspections, Chief Building Inspector Steve Holden. When we are notified by the Fire Marshal's Office after a fire or receive a complaint, such as the ones that you all often receive regarding buildings and other matters, this team works on those issues and gets to work together on that. Both of these cases have had their building safety hearing already, and so they're now before you for further action. Building cases are often resolved more quickly than code enforcement or zoning enforcement cases that are based on activities of the property owner, because these involve a building and structural safety. So, um, these two items will be both presented by Officer Marler and Steve Holden. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Uh, my name is Deputy James Marler. I assist with, in the Building Inspector Department after gaining my probationary building level one through the state of North Carolina in February. Uh, this case, the 7901 Houston Avenue, was brought to our attention from the Fire Marshal's Office, uh, via letter or email. According to the Assistant Fire Marshal, uh, uh, Robert Bishop, he described the fire as being a total loss to the home. Uh, several members of that home were displaced. So, um, in route to get to down, to go to that place, I got a call from some of our Narcotics Task Force agents. They requested my presence at the same location. Due to, they were working a sting operation with Catawba County. There's some sensitive stuff in there that I can't tell you, but, uh, they were looking for several subjects that could possibly be at this location. Uh, when I got there and took some photos of the home, which are in the packet, this is the day, um, that I was down there. And took the photos on 2/1, February the first, um, at which time there was a drivable motorhome parked beside this home. And these are the photos, photos after, but anyway, there were several people in the motorhome, uh, that were not property owners. One of them was the property owner, um, but the other folks were identified and sent on their way. They were not, didn't have, they had permission to be there from the property owner, but, um, they could not stay. The neighboring property, which is a local business, uh, provided an extension cord to the camper because it was the weekend. It was cold that weekend. It's kind of helped by neighbor out, kind of deal. At which time, I told the, that business, they'd had to disconnect it, which they did. And by that day's end, the camper was removed from the property. So, I informed the property owner, Mr. David Parker, of the condemnation process, and within 10 days, there would be a hearing within our office here to discuss the options for him, what he could do, uh, as far as state's statutory requirements go. Um, the hearing was held on the 14th of February in the office via, um, telephone conversation, uh, with Mr. Parker. Went through the options. He had the option to either board it up or demolition, the whole mobile, the whole home, and clean up all the property. Well, the home was built in the 40s, so in order to bring this home up to current building standards would take an extensive amount of money. So, and plus, there was no insurance on this home either. So, after the 60 days, um, time deadline, um, was, was, um, gone, then that's when we began the process of bringing it before you guys. And the photos you see here are after the 60 days, what progress had been done to this home for demolition, or at least boarded up. You can see some open windows, and the basement was still completely standing in water and a big hole in the roof. I don't know if you can see that from the photos, but... That's kind of where we are to this date. It is my understanding, um, and, um, Chief Building Inspector Stephen Holden, that this home is unsalvageable. It is beyond repair. So, I am asking for monetary funds to demolish this property and a lien put on the property in that amount. Any questions?
Gentlemen, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have a couple of, um, in your presentation, you said a notice was sent out to the owner?
Yes.
And the hearing, it carried, but did the owner attend the hearing?
He did via a telephone conference.
He did it by telephone?
By telephone, yes, sir, because of health issues.
And, and was there any interest in reclaiming or remodeling the home?
He wanted to, to be honest with you, but he has no job, no, um, insurance on the property to remodel or renovate or do anything. I told him, we, we, he got, he gave him, I gave him 60 days to either pull a building permit to salvage it if he wanted to, which he did not, a demolition permit, which he did not do. Um, and this is the extent of what he did in the 60-day timeframe from February the 14th.
What is the value of that property, do you know?
To be honest with you...
Value and the tax rate?
I do not know, other than the tax value. I can probably give that to you.
I think the question would be, um, does the value of the home, as much as the $20,000 you're requesting to destroy it, or...
The, the property value listed on GIS is $45,582. That's for the entire property. That's including, um, roughly three-quarters of an acre of property. State statute standard says if it's more than 50% value of the property, that it's not worth saving.
And the final question I had, is it a suitable training event for the fire department that they would run it for practice and...
That, that is a question I do not have an answer for. That would be for the, uh, fire department to make that determination. I will tell you that, uh, in my, um, investigation into this, there's been multiple calls for service for law enforcement to arrive on this thing, from suspicious people to drug activity, to, uh, warrant service, to that kind of stuff for this particular location. Everywhere, if you go to the Houston Avenue, if the road officer get a call, they know exactly where they're going. It's this property, every time. And also, um, last, the property is less than 800 feet from a public school, which would be East Burden Hill School.
Well, I have been seeing homes, houses remodeled and reconstructed, relived then, that I've never thought would been done. But the housing shortage and the demand for housing has created that, and that one really looks bad. I don't know if it's, as you said, it's probably not salvaged.
Uh, this is, this is, this is just photos from the outside. I did not go into the property, other than to stick my head in the camera in the window and snap a couple photos, goes, uh, without standing on the porch and afraid something would fall on me. So, in words of Chief and Building Inspector Steve Holden, anything can be fixed, just depending on how much money you want to put into it. But 50% value of the, of the home is not worth it. It would be more cost-effective to demo it and start over, because it was built in the 1940s.
And to Commissioner Taylor's, uh, comment, we've already had one burning train event, it sounds, training event, it sounds like, already on this property. And they're the one that recommended it. Best thing you can do with something like that is just bulldoze it. And so, uh, I'm in agreement. Any other questions, comments?
Another question, maybe it calls for $20,000. Is that for both?
No, sir. This, uh, I did have a, um, uh, general contractor, demolition contractor, just go by and just give me a rough estimate of this property and the next one as well. Um, just kind of throwing it, throwing some numbers out there. The $20,000 is well above what he gave to demolition this particular home. But given there were some other circumstances with this one, I'm requesting the $20,000. I think it would be substantially less than $20,000 to them demolition this property, this home, and clean the entire property up.
Any other questions, comments, gentlemen? All right. There being none, without objection, this item will remain under Items for Decision. Uh, we'll move on to abatement and demolition of 2380, no, I'm sorry, 2581 Rain Tree Street. Go ahead and continue, James.
Um, yes, sir. Uh, this was another one that was presented to us through the, uh, Fire Marshal here, uh, Robert Bishop, um, through email. After investigating this, you can see the photos, this is after the fire. Uh, I'd had a couple of code enforcement violations at this property a couple of years ago with a bunch of trash and just vagrants, that kind of stuff. Uh, broken windows and the doors. At that time, the family did step in and secure the home, but in December of last year, there was this fire that, according to the Fire Marshal's Office, was another total loss of this split-level home. And there's, there's substantial damage on, on the interior. Just, this is, just like the other, this was probably just a little bit worse, uh, for the wear than the other one, given the, the two levels. The hearing was held in January, uh, January 14th, uh, at which that hearing, nobody attended. Didn't have an address for any family member. The family, uh, member, the person who was listed as the owner on GIS had deceased some years ago. No further contact with any kind of family, friends, relative, uh, anything like that. I did, in eighth, in March of this year, did get ahold of a, uh, a bank in California that advised they would seek to remedy the property. And per Steve Holden's request was to get a, a structural engineer or a private home inspector to inspect this home just for the structural stability of this home. He can elaborate to that.
They gave us a date that they were going to demolish it, but then no one's ever done anything, and they never showed up, and now we haven't been able to get in contact with it. We, we don't know why that paused, but...
We had three different dates for demolition, that it was going to be demolished, demolished, but they came and went, and no, no further contact from any kind of bank representative or foreclosure, I guess.
We're receiving a complaint on this from the neighborhood about once a month now, every time what's going on.
And this, this one, along with the other one, was multiple calls for service for vagrants and drug activity, just you name it, uh, warrant service that... And every neighbor in this neighborhood on Rain Tree Street has called at least once or twice to our office to complain about this particular property. Because they've got small kids and animals and dogs and pets running around this whole neighborhood that, uh, they don't know what property lines are, so they go in and rummage around. And this property is just a hair over a mile from another public school. Any questions from myself or Chief Building Inspector Holden?
Any questions?
Well, I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, that's a brick home, and, and did the insurance pay for that house, or is it...
I, there's actually family members that live beside of it, and I went to speak with them, and it's, it's just like they've just left it. I mean...
They don't...
I don't understand exactly right now who the owner is.
But it says the owner, Jimmy H. Smith, has deceased.
Several years back.
But the daughters are, one's, one's next door and one lives in Hildreman, uh, apparently, and I've tried to get ahold of them and actually got ahold of a niece and...
Well, it, it says the home was damaged, badly damaged. It didn't say it was not, um, rebuildable. You have deemed the home structure unsafe, structurally?
Yeah, I've actually walked into this one, and it's, it's substantially damaged. Now, now, I'm, I'm saying an engineer could come in and say, yeah, we can fix this up, but it's, it's substantially damaged, more than 50% of the value.
And what's the value?
And I can't remember that. We got the number on the paper. This, this is a rather nice home, if you, if you actually look, you know, at the size of it, but when you go inside, it's, it's, the fire was extensive.
There's no property value listed on GIS. It's just a shade over acre and an acre and a half property. It's more long than it is wide.
We looked at these, these homes, and most of them were in the, you know, 200,000 range.
In the neighborhood, yes.
And every home on that street is pretty nice, except for this. And this is in behind Evans Construction there.
And, and the property's still in the deceased's name?
It is.
That makes it difficult.
We don't understand why there was a lien age or, or an actual bank, you know, contacting, saying, we're going to demolish it on these dates, but it, but it never happened. That's the reason this one has held. We, we've had the complaint for a long time.
Since December of last year.
So, we held it back because we didn't, we wanted them to tear it down instead of us.
But...
But that's not...
And as far as you know, there is money owed on the bank, the bank, to the bank?
That, 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 uh, bank agent would not divulge that information to us, whether there was still property, with still, uh, money owed on this property.
I don't know this gentleman, even though he's, they used to impart to the candidate. I'm not aware of him.
So, as the crow flies, it's less than a half a mile from a public school. Roadwise, it's 1.16 miles road.
And it'll please the neighbors to get this out of there.
And multiple officers have complained about the same, same, same property, just every night. You know where you're going if you get a call on this particular street for vagrants or drug activities. This is it.
Gentlemen, any other questions or comments?
No.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Without objection, this item will remain under Items for Decision. We'll move on to item number three. Madam Clerk, Appointment to Western Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees. Getting your steps in again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, we have two applicants for seat number two on the Western Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees, um, Rod Harrelson and Ryan Morgan. And so, this will be on your decision item, uh, agenda, and, uh, certainly let you know if we get any other applications on file before Tuesday.
Questions, comments for Madam Clerk? If not, thank you. Without objection... Without objection, this item will remain under Items for, uh, Decision. We'll move on to item number four, Tax Department Amendment to Agreement to Conduct Reappraisal Reviews, and this will be presented by our good friend John Bridgers, our tax administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This amendment is to amend the contract that we have with Pearson Appraisal Services. When they first began looking at the reappraisal that's required by statute, that random study by the Department of Revenue indicated that we needed a full list and measure. As the company got out there and started looking, we determined that that was not necessary so that we could pull that back for a savings to the county. At the same time, there was a plan to contract with the, somebody to do the commercial property and with, working with staff in, in the tax office. And the fellow that we were going to contract with had the audacity to go up, up and die on us, and then the two people in the tax office have retired. So that left us, was needing some more help. So we've taken the money, this, what this amendment does, takes the money we would have saved and put it over to the commercial property.
Gentlemen, you've heard the presentation. Any questions or comments for John? All right. Thank you, sir. Without objection, this item will remain on the Items for Decision.
Thank you, sir.
All right, gentlemen, that brings us to reports. Please submit your reports to Madam Clerk for inclusions into next Tuesday's agenda packet. Upcoming, upcoming meetings, we've got quite a few things coming up on, on your calendar. June twenty-first, six P.M., our regular meeting. June twenty-seventh, ten A.M., ribbon cutting Hickory Airport. We've got the new hanger to celebrate, so that is great. We're doing it at ten A.M. in the morning, thankfully, it's not at two. June twenty-eighth, very next day, eleven A.M., UNC Health Blue Ridge, Morganton, new patient tower and groundbreaking ceremony, so please attend that if you can. July fourth, wow, it's already here, county offices are, will be closed for Independence Day. July fifth will be our next pre-agenda at three P.M. And July nineteenth, our regular meeting will be at six P.M. So that being said, gentlemen, there is a needed, need for closed session today, so if I would accept a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight dot one-one-eight, three, four, five, and six.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into closed session?
Thank you, Commissioner Carswell. All those in favor, signify with uplifted hand. Gentlemen, let's go to closed session.
Do you need a break for your appointment at four?
Got six minutes.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, we had a proper motion to come out of closed session. We are now back in open session. Gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the purchase of real property, that being four-point-oh to four-point-one tract of land to be surveyed out of a larger tract that is located at twenty-six eighty-nine DAV Drive in Morganton, pin number two-seven-one-two-six-four-eight-two-eight-four, reading number six-two-six-six-eight, for an EMS station base one and appropriate up to one hundred thousand dollars for the land acquisition and twenty thousand dollars for due diligence to include survey of environmental audits and soil testing, further authorize the county manager to execute the offer to purchase and contract between Mr. Larry E. Fan and Burke County on behalf of the Burke County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Vice Chair Carswell. All those in favor of the motion, signify with uplifted hand. Those opposed? That's three to one, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, that's the end of business today. I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Four-zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you.